Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with Alodion Wars Premium, Antay, Colorado. The acronym is ANPAC, I'm the Chief Judge of Consul Court. Today is Class 61, Class 61. What do we learn in Class 60? Well, we're finishing up with the full reading of the Act of Algeciras, Chapter 3, Articles 31 through 58, right? And what do we learn about Chapter 3? What was Chapter 3 all about? It was about the concessions of a state bank, right? So it's all about the Moors coming back into consciousness that we need a state bank, right? So the state bank, what do we learn about the state bank? Well, according to Article 32 of Chapter 3, we learned that the Moors have the right to get their gold bullion back. That's the only way to set up the concessions of a state bank, right? What type of bank? State bank. What type of bank are we really talking about? The Empire State Bank, right? The Empire State of Morocco, the Empire State, right? So the Empire State will need gold bullions. What else will we need? We'll need to now start to mint that gold bullions, and we will also need to start printing currency, right? So how do we get our gold back? Well, you utilize Article 45, right, of Chapter 3. And what is Article 45 about? It's about understanding how to enforce your Consul Court orders, judgments, and opinions in order to have your gold bullions returned, deposited, or deposited back into the hands of a person worthy of trust. And who's the person worthy of trust? Based upon your Treaty of Peace and Friendship of 1836, Chapter 22? What should I say, Article 22? It is who? The Moorish state government, right? And more specifically, the Empire State. The Empire State will now collect the gold bullions, right? And would provide banking for all of the Moorish states, right? That's what this is all about. It's about the enforcement of your treaty provisions, right? So what else did we learn in Chapter 3? We learned that the enforcement of the censor and the High Commission will oversee the bank, right, the Empire Bank, right? But what else is the job of the censor and the High Commission? The High Commission's job is to maintain a compliance of banks. But at the same time, the Empire State Bank oversees all banking in the empire. So therefore, it's the Moors' obligation to enforce their treaty provisions, to enforce their legation, which is the legislation they set forth in order to now to govern the affairs of all banks in the empire, right? And at the end of the day, what is this all about? This is about economic liberty without any, any quality. That's a part of the triple principle. And what is the triple principle? Sovereignty and independence of your state. What else? Interior domains of your jurisdiction. What else? It's about economic liberty without any, any quality. That's your economic, social, and needs of your state, right? That's an organized, dual society. That's what we're now moving towards, right? We're now starting to read the instructions. The Moors are now starting to become competent. They're starting to check the boxes. But at the end of the day, what happens? How do we enforce the rights of a state bank if we don't have a state? If you don't have a state, you need what? You need the paramount constitution. And that constitution has to be ratified, deposited, and promulgated with the United Nations Article 102. But where did the United Nations get that Article 102 from? They got it from the provisions of your Act of Algeciras, Chapter 7, Articles 120 to 123. You must always keep that in mind, Moors. This is about following the treaty provisions of your own treaties. The Act of Algeciras tells you, you must ratify and deposit, right? You must promulgate. That's what your treaty says, alright? So all the Moors have to follow instructions of well-served principles regarding international law. And what is international law? Your Moorish treaty, alright? So let's go ahead and get into the class. Obviously, we always open up about the Constitution. All the Moors would need their own paramount constitution of each of the territories, right? For example, all of 50 territories that have been annexed by the Colonists, right? Each of the Moors will have to now ratify a constitution. And once you ratify that constitution, you must deposit it and promulgate it with the United Nations Article 102, okay? That is the instructions, alright? So that's very important as it relates to Moors. Why else is this important? It's about the latitude, longitude of your territory. That's the Treaty of Montevideo, 1933. Article 1 says you must have what? Permit population, permit territory, what else? Government and the ability to get into what? Relations with other states, right? So we all have to follow treaty provisions. That must be understood, alright? Okay, let's go ahead and jump into the class. So today, we'll start reading over Chapter 4 of the Act of Algeciras, alright? So Chapter 4 will consist of Articles 59 through 76, so it's approximately 18 articles, right? That's 18 articles. As we did in all the previous chapters, we'll read five articles at a time, or we'll get a nice clean read. But what is Article 4? Or should I say, Chapter 4, all about? Well, Chapter 4 of the Act of Algeciras, 1906, is about a declaration concerning a better return on taxes and the creation of new revenues, alright? This is what we're about to read over now. This is very important for Moors to understand. Why don't the Sultan set it up like this, right? So we talked about Chapter 1 of the Act of Algeciras, 1906, about what? Reigning in the order, setting up the ability for states now to get into diplomatic relations and consul relations, right? Keep in mind, in the Act of Algeciras, 75% of it is about commerce. Most treaties are about commerce. So Chapter 1 was about what? Reigning in order of what? The police, the militia, the military. Then we got into what? Chapter 2 talked about what? Talking about contraband honor. For the Moors to now issue firmans, i.e. licenses and permits, to everyone in the empire in order for them to hold on to arms, right? What else did we learn in Chapter 2? It was all about enforcing your Consul Court. Remember, there were five articles within Chapter 2 that talked about enforcing Consul Court. Because it's very important to understand that you must control the arms in your jurisdiction. Then we went into Chapter 3. What was Chapter 3 about? Banking, right? Now we're going into Chapter 4. 4 is talking about what? Collecting taxes and revenue. So as you see, the Sultan set it up. Well, the first thing he wanted to do was reign in the order. Then he wanted to set up a bank account. And now he's collecting taxes to be able to do what? Deposit it to that bank account. That's what's going on right now, right? So now we're talking about economic liberty without any, any quality. Okay, so let's go ahead and get started with the reading. We'll read Articles 59, and we'll read the first five articles. I think it's 59 through 64, alright? And we'll stop at Article 64, okay? Alright, let's go ahead and get a nice clean read, starting with Chapter 4.
A declaration concerning a better return of taxes and the creation of new revenues. Article 59. As soon as the Tariq shall have been put into regular operation with regard to Moorish subjects, the representatives of the powers at Tangier shall subject their citizens, subjects, and proteges in the empire to the application thereof. But it is understood that this tax shall not be applied to foreign subjects except, A, under the conditions stipulated by the regulation of the diplomatic body at Tangier on November 24, 1903; B, at places where it shall effectively be collected from Moorish subjects. The Consular authorities shall retain a certain percentage of the receipts of the taxes they collect from those subjects to their jurisdiction to cover the cost of tax bills and collection. The rate of such percentage shall be fixed by mutual agreement between the Magzeh and the diplomatic body at Tangier. Article 60. In accordance with the right granted by Article 11 of the Madrid Convention, foreigners shall have the right to acquire property throughout the Sharifian Empire. And His Majesty, the Sultan, shall issue to his administrative and judicial officers such instructions as may be necessary for them not to refuse the registration of deeds without lawful cause. Subject transfers, either by deeds between living parties or by death, shall continue without hindrance in the ports open to commerce and within a radius of 10 kilometers around such ports. His Majesty, the Sultan, generally, and without it being necessary henceforth, for foreign subjects to obtain a special permission for each purchase of property, now grants the consent required by Article 11 of the Madrid Convention. At Qassar al-Khabir, Arzila, Azimour, and eventually in other towns of the coast or the interior, the general authorization stated above is likewise granted to foreigners, but only for purchasers within a radius of 2 kilometers around those towns. Wherever foreigners may have acquired property, they will be permitted to erect buildings in compliance with regulations and usage. Before authorizing the executive of deeds for transferring property...
Execution.
Execution. Authorizing the execution of deeds for transferring property, the Qadi will have to satisfy himself of the validity of the title and conformity to the Mohammedan law. The Magzeh shall designate in each city and district specified in this article the Qadi who shall have charge of such verification. Article 61. Within a view to creating new resources for the Magzeh, the Conference recognizes in principle that a tax may be established on city buildings. A part of the receipts thus realized shall be set aside for the requirements of municipal streets and hygiene, and generally for the expense of improvement and conservation of the cities. The tax is due from the Moorish or foreign owner, without distinction. But the tenant or the holder of the key shall be responsible to the Moorish Treasury. Regulations issued jointly by the Sharifian government and the diplomatic body at Tangier shall establish the rate, its method of collection and application, and shall determine the quota of revenue thus created, which shall be devoted to the expense of improvement and conservation of the cities. At Tangier, this quota shall be turned over to the International Sanitary Council, which shall decide as to its use until the creation of a municipal organization. Article 62. His Sharifian Majesty having decided in 1901 that the Moorish officials who collect the agricultural taxes shall no longer receive either the sopra or the muna, the Conference is of the opinion that this rule shall be made general so far as is possible. Article 63. The Sharifian delegates have stated that habu property or certain state property, notably buildings of the Magzeh occupied at a rental of 6% are held by persons subject to foreign jurisdiction without regular title or by virtue of contracts subject to revision. The Conference desires of remedying the state of affairs, charges the diplomatic body at Tangier to solve these two questions equitably in accord with the Special Commissioner whom His Sharifian Majesty may be pleased to designate to that effect.
Okay, thank you very much, Moors. Alright, let's go back and do a recap of these five articles that we have covered, right? So keeping in mind that Chapter 4 is all about a declaration concerning a better return of taxes and the creation of new revenues. Now, as the Moors should already understand, what was the main reason why the colonists rejected Great Britain? The colonists didn't want to pay taxes to their own sovereign, which was Great Britain. So therefore, the colonists turned around and signed off on contracts known as constitutions and treaties with the understanding they still had an obligation to pay taxes to the sovereign known as the Moorish Empire, and more specifically, to pay taxes to the Moroccan Moors instead of the British Moors. That must be understood. So the colonists never wanted to pay taxes to anyone. So therefore, over a period of time, they kicked their own sovereign mother to the curb, which was Great Britain. Then they turned around and tried to kick the Moors, the Moroccan Moors, to the curb because they didn't want to pay taxes to no one. They wanted to try to maintain what's called sovereignty and independence of their own colonial states. But they didn't have states. They had charters. That must be understood. So as we get into Chapter 4, always remember that colonists don't like to pay taxes to nobody, even when they sign a contract. So if we start to now enforce Chapter 4, always keep in mind that what is our biggest obstacle in terms of Moors and their Moorish organic states? Our obstacle is not the United States and their minions. Who am I talking about? It is not the President of the United States that's the problem. It's not their so-called Congress that's the problem. It's not their governors that's the problem. It's not their police, it's not their sheriff, it's not their marshals. You know what the problem is? The bankers. Everything that we would do as Moorish states is all about coming after the taxes that they owe Moroccan Moors. And the bankers do not like to write checks to Moors. The entire time, the reason why Moors have been subjugated is the colonists did not want to pay taxes to the Moors. And the bankers are going to be the ones who give us the biggest pushback. Please understand, the President of the United States, the governors, all their minions, their so-called holding of offices, a de facto office, all work for the bankers. So at the end of the day, our biggest dispute will always be with their bankers and their shareholders and their bondholders. And the bankers, shareholders, and bondholders are all using their minions, called the president, and all their organs such as their Department of Justice, their governors, the police, the IRS, to use as middlemen to try to now enforce their municipal law, i.e. their statutes against anyone they think is in their jurisdiction. So always remember, Moors, as we get into Chapter 4, as we start to now enforce our rights through Consul Court, at the end of the day, who's going to give us the biggest pushback? Their bankers, shareholders, bondholders. Remember I said that? Okay. Chapter 4. A declaration concerning a better return of taxes and the creation of new revenues. Article 59. As soon as the Tertia shall have been put into regular operation with regards to Moorish subjects, the representatives of the powers of Tangier shall subject their citizens, subjects, and proteges in the empire to the application thereof. Let's pause right there. What is a tertia? Alright, so let's go ahead and look that word up real quick. Tertia.
One means the arrangement of records, the list, in alphabetical order. Example, names of persons and property addresses. See Treaty of Madrid, 1887, Articles 7 and 8 regarding the list.
Alright, so tertia means the arrangement of records, the list, quote-unquote, in alphabetical order. For example, names of persons and property, addresses, et cetera. See Treaty of Madrid, 1880, Articles 7 and 8 regarding the list, right? So this right now, tertia, in your treaty, is talking about a list. But what's the list about? Okay. As soon as the tertia, the list, the record, right? Of names, properties, et cetera, shall have been put into regular operation with regard to Moorish subjects. The representatives of the powers at Tangier shall subject their citizens, subjects, and proteges in the empire to the application thereof. What application? The application is the tertia. And what's the tertia? The list, right? Now, what we have to understand is this. Immediately, Article 59 is the enforcement of all your treaty provisions such as the Treaty of Madrid, Article 7 and 8. But who's enforcing it? Before we go to the Treaty of Madrid, who's enforcing Article 59? Okay, let's go to it. This right here is what? France versus United States of America, 1952, page 197, right? 197, there we go, page 197, reference point. France versus United States of America, 1952, page 197. The International Court of Justice pointed out Article 59, saying, "You Moors need to enforce Article 59," right? So as soon as we open up, the Act of Algeciras, 1906, Article 59, which is, soon we open up, they immediately start talking about enforcing Consul Court. Were they enforcing? The law. The law of what? Collecting taxes and revenue. As well as enforcing the list that's supposed to be handed over to the Moorish state government. And it's the obligation of the Consul Court to enforce these treaty provisions. That must be understood. We're talking about it, alright? Okay. So the tertia, right? Tertia was the list. Let's go now to Treaty of Madrid. As a reference point, we have to understand what's happening, right? There's no need in us talking about how to collect taxes and revenue, and we don't understand exactly what Chapter 4 is talking about, right? So Chapter 4 opens up in Article 59, immediately talking about Consul Court enforcement. And enforcement of what? Taxes and revenue, and what else? The list. The list, okay? Alright, mother, Article 7 of the Treaty of Madrid, 1880, Article 7.
Foreign representatives shall inform the Sultan's Minister of Foreign Affairs in writing of any selection of an employee made by them. Write a protection in Morocco, July 3, 1880. They shall furnish annually to the said minister a list of the names of the persons protected by them or by their agents throughout the states of the Sultan of Morocco. This list shall be transmitted to the local authorities, who shall consider as persons enjoying protection only those whose names are contained therein.
Okay, pause. Okay, so that's the tertia list, right? We'll go to Article 8 here in just a moment. Let's go back, right? Tertia is talking about what? Means the arrangement of records, the list, in alphabetical order, right? Names of persons and property, addresses, et cetera, right? Let's go back. Talking about your treaty, the tertia, right? Talking about what? These Moorish subjects is the list of names. But what else is the list? Okay, the Act of Algeciras of 1906 now has upgraded. Now it's a list of who? Citizens, subjects, and proteges in the empire. And that is what? The application, right? The application, right? So the application right here, the application thereof, the application is the tertia, the list of Moorish subjects, citizens, and proteges. That must be understood, okay? Let's continue on with Treaty of Madrid, 1880. So, it says right here. They shall furnish annually. Who's the "they"? The United States of America. They shall furnish annually to the said Minister of Foreign Affairs a list of the names of the persons protected by them or by their agents throughout the states. The states of the Sultan of Morocco. You see it as capital S, states. Capital S as organic states. This list shall be transmitted to the local authorities, who shall consider a persons enjoying protection only those whose names are contained therein. Okay, let's move on to Article 8. Mother?
Consular officers shall transmit each year to the authorities of the district in which they reside a list bearing their seal of the persons protected by them. These authorities shall transmit it to the Minister of Foreign Affairs to the end that if it be not conformable to the regulations, the representatives at Tangier may be informed of the fact. A consular officer shall be required to give immediate information of any changes that may have taken place among the persons protected by his consulate.
Okay, so immediately, this is about the list of Moorish subjects? Okay, that was 1880, okay? But in 1906, now that list has got a little bit longer. Because now that list not only includes the Moorish subjects. Who are Moorish subjects? Those Moors who have failed to return to Morocco to consent to a Moorish state government, a competent Moorish state government. That must be understood. You must consent to an application. And what is that application? You must consent to the constitution of that Moorish state. You must renounce any type of alleged nationalization status of the United States and United States of America. You must renounce. And then come and consent to your Moorish state government. Until then, you are a Moorish subject. But however, Article 59 also includes a list of citizens plus citizens. Citizens in United States of America or the United States International Organization, subjects and proteges in the empire to the application thereof. That must be understood. This is important to understand. And Article 59 is about the demanded, being a Consul Court is demanding for the list. Who else is demanding it? The Minister of Foreign Affairs. So the Minister of Foreign Affairs should be reaching out to who? The charter colonies as well as to United States, which is a charter, and the United States of America to receive the list. In addition to that, the Moors will start to also provide the United States International Organization and the United States of America and all their charter colonies that they refer to as being the so-called cerebral union states, even though they're not states. That's why they always spell their state either with a all cap state or they're spelled state with a lowercase s because they know it's a charter, it's not an organic state. You must understand this, okay? So we reach out to both the charter colonies, right? They refer themselves as the state of. We reach out to the United States. And we reach out to the United States of America and provide them with the list as well. Why do we do that? Who is on the list, matter of fact? Is your former Moroccan subject name. Your former Moroccan subject name is the name that needs to consent to the Moroccan government. Your Kendrick Bay was never on the registration of the United States. You must understand that. Your Kendrick Bay is on the registration of your Moorish state government. It was never on the list with the United States. But who is on the list of the United States? Kendrick Johnson, the Moroccan subject. And now that Moroccan subject has now followed the treaty provisions of the Treaty of Madrid, 1880, Article 15, Clause 1, says that Moroccan subject must return to the Moorish state government. So Kendrick Johnson is on the list. Now Kendrick Johnson returns to Morocco. Now he's on what? The list of the Moorish state government. Now the Moorish state government through the Consul Court issues now what? An order showing the list of the former Moroccan subjects that have pledged their consent to the Moorish state government, alright? So it's a vice versa type of provision that we're reading here. It's important for Moors to understand this. However, who's supposed to do it first? The United States of America, the United States and their charter colonies, commonly known as the state of, right? They're supposed to provide our Minister of Foreign Affairs with the list. But when will they provide the list? When we request it. That's when they'll provide the list, okay? Okay, let's start from the top. It's very important to understand, Moors. It's very important, very important. Okay, so Chapter 4. Even though Chapter 4 is about collecting taxes, who are we collecting taxes on? Okay, they tell you in the treaty. You're collecting taxes on who? Citizens, subjects, and proteges. Well, how do you know who to collect taxes on if you don't have a list of persons that you're collecting taxes from? Who else are persons? All of their so-called states are persons. All of their corporations are artificial persons. All of their citizens are persons. You must understand, the word "person" is what you call a legal personality. The word "person" is a legal personality. The word "person" is a legal personality. And you must now make the distinction of those legal personalities. Person can be a human being, living human being. A person can be an artificial corporation. A person can be a state. You have to understand these distinctions. Everything in international law is deemed a person, but you must understand the legal personality. And charters, corporations do not have the legal personality of being an organic state. You must always understand that. All of that is subordinate. Everything's subordinate to your league, to your, now your organic state. That must be understood. As we start talking about taxes, we gotta get the proper mindset. Who are we taxing? We're taxing who? Citizens, subjects, proteges, and who else? The person is known as the United States of America. The United States of America, international law, is known as what? A person. That's also who we are taxing. Who else are we taxing? The international organization known as the United States. That's who we're taxing. Who else are we taxing? Well, we're gonna tax their individual citizens. We're gonna tax their individual subjects, which is the ipso dure Moors subjects. And some of those ipso dure Moors subjects are also proteges that work for the federal de facto government of the United States International Organization. And it's the obligation of the United States International Organization and the United States of America to provide us with the list. And the list is what you refer to as an application, an application an application thereof of all these persons that they're pointing out, including the United States of America, which is the first person on our list. Who's second on the list? The United States as a person, a legal personality person. Who else is next?
The State of.
The State of, that's right, which the United States with their chartered colonies, we, we taxed them, who's next after that? Their organs, what are their organs? All their departments that they're referred to, such as their transportation department, et cetera, that's an organ. Organ is a short word for organization, but it's the organ, because human beings have organs, right? But the artificial person also has organs, it's the organizations, the organs. This must be understood. Who are we taxing? That's the question, okay? Alright, let's continue from the top. Chapter four, Declaration concerning a Better Return of Taxes and the Creation of New Revenues, article fifty-nine. As soon as the Tertia shall have been put into regular operation, with regard to Moors subjects, the representatives of the powers at Tangier shall subject their citizens, subjects, and proteges in the empire to the application thereof. But it's understood that this tax should not be applied to foreign subjects except A, under the conditions or stipulated by the regulations of the diplomatic body at Tangier on November twenty-fourth nineteen oh three, and B, at places where it shall effectively be collected from Moors subjects. The consul authorities shall retain a certain percentage, listen. The consul authorities shall retain a certain percentage of the receipts of the taxes they collect from those subject to their jurisdiction to cover the cost of tax bills and collections. So it's the obligation of the Moors government and their consul authorities to collect the taxes. We'll talk more about that today, alright? It continues, the rate of such percentage shall be fixed by a mutual agreement between the Monzin and the diplomatic body at Tangier. So therefore, we'll set up a percentage, Moors, of what percentage we get of the taxes. Who's collecting taxes right now, let's talk about that, okay, let's, let's go back. Who, who's collecting taxes right now?
Minister of Foreign Affairs.
Well, not at this time.
Well, we're not taxing, collecting taxes.
Correct, right?
The Charters.
Right, so right now, who, who's collecting taxes right now? The United States of America, right? Through its international organization called the United States. And the United States has set up a charter, a financial institution called an intergovernmental organization known as the Federal Reserve. The Federal Reserve was established in nineteen thirteen. The Federal Reserve now acts as the bill collector. And the Federal Reserve has set up what's called the IRS, the Internal Revenue Agency, right? Or system, right? So what's happening? Right now, the United States, through the Federal Reserve and the IRS is collecting all the taxes from who? Their citizens, subjects, and proteges. That's who's collecting the taxes. But the Moors state governments haven't been receiving their percentage, why not? Because the Moors have been annexed, because the Moors have been what? In a status of acquiescence. We delayed our own justice because we didn't understand how to enforce international law. And what is international law? Our Moors treaties, the numerous treaties that Hoffman, Philip, in nineteen oh six pointed out through the expatriation protection abroad document that was sent to Mr. Rup, paid four fifty-nine to four sixty to talks about these Moors lost their nationality, they lost their state. They lost the right to collect taxes because the Moors were stateless. The Moors became subjects, and subjects can enforce Moroccan law. So now that Moors are coming back into the competency of Moors state governments, now we can enforce Moroccan law. Now we can get our percentage from who? Well, who owes it truly? Now you must understand the parties of the contract. The contract says who? The United States of America is obligated, that's what the contract says. So the United States of America needs to go to who to get the money? The United States. Then the United States International Organization needs to go to who to get the money? The Federal Reserve, you see? That's how it flows back up, it's a flow chart, back up to the United States of America. The United States of America owes the taxes, because they're the contracting party. They're the contracting state, that's who ultimately owes it. That must be understood, it's about the parties to the contract. But never forget that the United States International Organization also ratified all the Moors treaties. As an international organization, the United States ratified the treaties as well. So they're also on the hook to pay, even though they're not a contracting state, they're still obligated to pay, why? Because they agreed to the terms and conditions of the treaty. You see? So who's ultimately responsible? The United States of America is ultimately responsible for paying the taxes that they, as an organic state, that at this time only exists in name only, I'll say it again. The United States of America exists in name only, why is that? Because they're void of a government. They're void of a population. They have no population of the United States of America, why do I say that? Because all their citizens come underneath what? The United States International Organization, there are no citizens of the United States of America. That's the truth. Alright, let's continue. Article fifty-nine, I know we're spending some time on this, but it's very important to understand, who are we taxing and who owes the tax? If we don't understand that, then who do we send the bill to? We have to understand who we send the invoice to, okay? Article fifty-nine, as soon as the Tertia shall have been put into regular operations with regards to Moors subjects, the representatives of the power of Tangier shall subject their citizens, subjects, and proteges in the, in the empire to the application thereof, okay? Let's jump on down to article sixty. In accordance with the right granted by article eleven of the Madrid Convention, foreigners shall have the right to acquire property throughout the Sharifian Empire. And His Majesty the Sultan shall issue to his administrative and judicial officers such instructions as may be necessary for them not to refuse the registration of deeds without lawful cause. Subsequent transfer either by deeds between living parties or by death shall continue without hindrance. What did we learn in that paragraph? In that paragraph, right there, this is when you go back to your treaty provisions, Moors. This is redundant, you go back to the Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, article eleven. And what did the Sultan allow the colonies to do? Okay, article eleven says, the right to hold property is recognized in Morocco as belonging to all foreigners. The purchase of property must take place with the previous consent of the government. What government? The Moroccan government. And the title of such property shall be subject to the forms prescribed by the laws of the country. And what's the country? Morocco is the country, that's the state. That must be understood. So right here, the Sultan gave them permission to hold property, okay? So that's why you go back over to the Act of Osters nineteen oh six. Article sixty is now referring back to the Treaty of Madrid, you see these treaty provisions are coming back full circle? Alright, one more time, article sixty, in accordance with the right granted by article eleven of the Madrid Convention, foreigners shall have the right to acquire property without the, throughout the Sharifian Empire. And His Majesty the Sultan shall issue to his administrator and judicial officers such instructions as may be necessary for them not to refuse the registration of deeds without lawful cause. So who's overseeing the deeds? The administrators, and who else? The judges of the Moroccan government. That must be understood, we have jurisdiction over deeds. Let's continue. The subsequent transfer either by deeds between living parties or by death shall continue without hindrance. And the ports open to commerce and within a radius of ten kilometers around such ports, His Majesty the Sultan generally and without it being necessary henceforth for foreign subjects to obtain a special permission for each purchase of property now grants the consent required by article eleven of the Treaty of, of, the Treaty, of the Treaty of Madrid Convention. Remember we went on the definition of charter. So, so the Sultan is granting permission for the colonies, i.e. the foreigners, to hold property in Morocco, but it is a grant. It is a permit, it's permission. Understanding that, when does that expire? It expires if either the parties petition to abandon the treaty and all their deeds, if in fact they have deeds, become expired as well. That must be understood. So it's a grant, and all grants, all permits, all licenses have an expiration date, all of them. So right here, you gotta understand what's happening here, Moors. Let's read again, and the ports open to commerce and within a radius of ten kilometers around such ports, His Majesty the Sultan generally and without it being necessary henceforth for foreign subjects to obtain a special permission for each purchase of property now grants the consent required by article eleven of the Madrid Convention. At Kassar El Khair, Azila Azamor, and eventually in other towns on the coast or the interior, the general authorization stated above is likewise granted to foreigners, but only for purchases within a radius of two kilometers around those towns, continue. Listen. Whenever foreigners may have acquired property, they will be permitted to erect buildings in compliance with the regulation and usage. What regulation and usage? That's the legislation of the Moors state governments. The Moors have to enact legislation as relates to what? Land usage. But what is that we're, we're taxing? Well, according to this, we're taxing and understanding based upon our regulations and usage, which is our legislation, they've been given permission and grants to erect buildings in compliance, in compliance with regulations and usage of Moroccan law. That must be understood. That has to be understood, Moors, who's overseeing any of their infrastructure, when they're building? Moors state governments. That's why if you read the Rights of Indigenous People two thousand and seven, it talks about the fact that the colonists have to get permission from the indigenous people as it relates to anything that the colonists do in the land. Okay, this is about treaty provisions. Okay, let's continue. Before authorizing the execution of deeds for transferring property, the Qadi will have to satisfy himself of the validity of the title in conformity to the Mohammedan law, what's Mohammedan law? The legislation that the Moors state governments put together, it's the law of the man. That governs what? The usage of how the man's being used by foreigners in Morocco, i.e. the United States of America, the United States International Organization, and there are several chartered colonies commonly known as the State of, et cetera, right? But let's learn more about the Qadi, because the Qadi is responsible for chapter four, overseeing what? Taxes and revenue, alright? Okay, let's dive in real quick, we've gone over this before, no redundant, but let's go to it, okay? Who is the Qadi? Black's Law Dictionary, fourth edition, mother?
A Turkish civil magistrate.
Okay, so the Qadi is a Turkish civil magistrate. Don't worry about the word Turkish, because the United States of America love to use these words, these are code words. Turkish means what? Ottoman Empire, right? But they also talk about the Moors Empire, these just code words they use, right? But the Qadi is a magistrate, okay? So we already learned that the Qadi as it relates to the Act of Osters nineteen oh six, chapter four, is responsible for collecting the taxes and revenue, alright, as a magistrate, but watch this. What's a magistrate? Okay, mother?
Person clothed with power as a public civil officer. A public officer belonging to the civil organization of the state and invested with powers and functions which, which may be either judicial, legislative, or executive. But the term is commonly used in a narrower sense, designating in England a person entrusted with the commission of the peace, and in America, one of the class of inferior judicial officers, such as justices of the peace and police justices.
Alright, thank you, mother. So what are we learning already about the magistrate stats? Okay, so the magistrate, a person clothed with power as a public civil officer, right? So anytime an officer of the state, whether they're elected or they're appointed, they are clothed, what's clothed mean? They're given what? The competent authority of the state, right? That's the clothing, they clothe them now with judicial authorization, identification. They sworn into that office, now they're obligated to abide by the law and enforce the law. So they're clothed with the law, they're clothed with identification, alright? Now they're clothed with identification, a person clothed with power as a public civil officer, okay? A public officer belonging to the civil organization of the state. So therefore, magistrates are officers of the state. Now obviously, when the United States barristers, lawyers, right, attorneys write the word state, they write the word state lowercase s, because they know they're not organic states, right? They write it code, right? This is what you call a non-degire. This is what you call a misnomer. This is called a connotative linguistic. Because the word state, state is a noun, person, place, or thing, noun, capital S, right? So when the United States writes it, they always write it with a lowercase s because they know their chartered colonies are not organic states, you have to understand this. Okay, take it from the top, a public officer belonging to the civil organization of the state and invested with the powers and functions which may be either judicial, legislative, or executive. So the Qadi is enforcing what? Has judicial powers, legislative powers, or executive powers, because the state has now extended a power to the Qadi. The Qadi is very similar to the IRS. Alright, so the IRS has what? Somewhat judicial power, executive power, and legislative powers to do what? Enforce tax statutes against the citizens. They almost act like a judicial branch, right? They have all the rights to sanction their, their citizens, but yet they're not judges. But they've been extended the power almost like a judge, that's why they're magistrate, to ex- they've been extended some judicial power to extend sanctions against their citizens for not paying taxes. Let's continue. But, you see right here, but, but term is commonly used in a narrower sense, designating in England a person entrusted with the commission of the peace, like police officers? Police officers are not judges, but yet they have a lot of judicial power, don't they? The Qadi has a lot of judicial power to enact sanctions against who? Citizens, subjects, proteges, you see? Peace, and in America, one of the class of inferior judicial officers, such as justices of the peace and police justices, you see that? They're trying to let you know the magistrate is almost like a police, the policy enforcer. You see? Enforcing the policies of the Moroccan state legislation as it relates to taxes and revenue. The Qadi is very powerful. The Qadi doesn't necessarily need the consul court to enact sanctions. However, if the Qadi needs enforcement of that sanction, then the Qadi brings it to consul court, then the consul court issues this order for that citizen. Then the consul court issues its order for that citizen, subject, protege. Or the charter colonies to pay. You understand? Alright, okay, mother, let's continue to read.
A magistrate is an officer having power to issue a warrant for the arrest of a person charged with a public offense.
Okay, so you see how powerful the Qadi is? The warrant is what? It's a warrant, what's a warrant? A warrant is what? A suit, right? A warrant is what? Someone owes something, it's warranted. Because there's an invoice sent and it hasn't been paid, okay? The warrant now says, now you owe this debt, now you're going to what? Debt collections. And the Qadi is a collector, a bill collector. Collecting on that warrant, okay? Okay, mother, the word.
The word magistrate does not necessarily imply. An officer exercising any judicial functions. It might very well be held to embrace notaries and commissioners of deeds.
Alright, so right in there, we're learning the Qadi is all about what? The deeds, we learned that in Act of Al-Saraab, right? Article sixty, start talking about deeds. So the Qadi is what? The word magistrate does not necessarily imply an officer exercising any judicial functions. It might very well be held to embrace notaries and commissioners of deeds. Qadi oversees deeds and revenue. So therefore, the Qadi almost acts in a duality of collecting, it's almost like the IRS. And a combination of the county assessor coming together to enforce regulations as it relates to deeds. And regulations as it relates to what? Taxes. This is a very powerful role of the Qadi in any of the Moors, Moors state governments, okay? Alright.
For chief, you want me to read that?
Yeah, go ahead.
For chief magistrate, committee magistrate, police magistrate, and stipendary magistrate, see those titles.
Alright, thank you very much, okay, so the Qadi, let's go back. The Qadi is a magistrate, but the magistrate has been extended police powers. To submit invoices, warrants for what? The return of taxes and revenue. And also to satisfy itself as it relates to dealing with deeds, to oversee deeds, to make sure the deed payer. The person holding the deed has an obligation to pay what? Property taxes, right? And the property taxes cannot, have to be paid, and if it hasn't been paid, what happens? Before authorizing the execution of deeds for transferring property. The Qadi will have to satisfy himself of the validity of the title. In conformity to the Mohammedan law. So the Moors state governments will have to come up with laws as it relates to how the Qadi functions. In terms of what sanctions you're putting against properties of who? Citizens, subjects, and proteges. And any property that the United States of America and the United States claim they're holding as a title. Or deeds. We'll learn more about that. Okay, what else do we need to know about the Qadi? Okay. So the magistrate court, alright? So the Qadi, right? We talked about this in some of the earlier classes, right, at AIPAC study session? Somewhere around class like thirty-one to thirty-five, somewhere up in there, right? And I showed you examples of how the Qadi and the Qazi, which is your chief judge, work side by side, very powerful pieces, right? And as you see, it's the Qazi, which is a rook on a chessboard. And the Qadi is a rook on a chessboard, two rooks, right? The Qazi and the Qadi create serendipitous discovered checks. When strategically used in combination of each other. The Qazis contempt sanctions will cause the Qadi to satisfy the validity of the title. Deeds in conformity to the Mohammedan law. This is what you call political counterintelligence. What's political? State. This is state counterintelligence, right? So we're countering their intelligence. They're using the intelligence of collecting taxes on their citizens. But in return, how do we counter that? We must send them a bill, a warrant, an invoice to collect taxes as well on who? On their United States of America, contracting state. On United States International Organization. Their departments that are known as organs in international law. As well as their citizens, subjects, and proteges, that's who we're taxing. So therefore, the Qazi and the Qadi work side by side. But the Qadi has the magistrate powers to submit sanctions by itself. And when all sanctions don't get paid, the Qadi can come over to the Qazi. And the Qazi will issue what? Counsel court orders to enforce it against the United States, okay? Listen. Keep in mind, the chessboard, see the black and white squares? We'll learn more about that, called the checkers, right, the checker squares? Okay, listen. Revenue, alright? Let's go back to the treaty. Act of Al-Saraab nineteen oh six, okay, going back up, we're talking about revenue. The Qadi is responsible for what? Collecting the taxes and creating new revenues, right? So everybody understands the basic taxes, let's talk about these revenues, right? Revenue, definition of revenue, Black Thought Dictionary, fourth edition, mother?
Return yield as a land profit that which returns or comes back from an investment. The annual or periodical rents, profits, inter.
Interest?
Interest, res.
Interest?
Oh, interest, that's one word, oh, okay. Interest or issues of any species of property, real or personal income.
Alright, so right there, revenue is about what? It's a return, return on investment. What investment? When the Sultan and the kings of Morocco. Allow the thirteen colonies to remain in Morocco, why? Because they want to collect taxes, they created a revenue string for themselves. You must understand what's happening here, this is a return on investment and who's the investment? Allowing the United States of America to remain in Morocco. And to tax everything they do based upon consumption taxes in Morocco. The investment is the United States of America. That is the asset of the Moors. And that asset now should be placed in a trust. And that trust will now be deposited in the hands of the Moors state governments. And the trust typically holds your assets. You must understand, Moors, that the United States of America is being the contracting state. And their international organization known as the United States and all of their organs are assets. It is a portfolio that now the Moors must govern. That is the obligation of a treaty, the treaty is supreme law of the land. And the treaty says it's the obligation of the competent Moors state governments to oversee the asset. That must be understood. Let's take it from the top, revenue based upon the Qadi. It's about a return, return on what? Investment, who's the investment? The United States of America. To yield as a land profit that which return or comes back from an investment. The annual or periodical rents, profits, interest, or issues of any species of property. Real or personal income, that's revenue. And that's the Qadi's obligation to go out and collect it. Let's continue. Mother?
Also, the income of an individual or private corporation.
Uh huh, so we tax who? Corporations, okay, who are corporations? The State of Colorado as an example, is a corporation. It is a municipal corporation, is what you call a district. The State of Colorado as an example is a district. That's being overseen by who? The Federal Reserve, cause the Federal Reserve set up these districts. For the United States to oversee it as a municipal corporation. So we, we tax corporations, i.e. districts. We tax the Federal Reserve and all the treasuries, alleged treasuries. Of each one of these territories that they refer to as the fifty union states. Fifteen, mother?
As applied to the income of a government, a broad and general term. Including all public monies which the state collects and receives from whatever source and in whatever manner.
Alright, so what do we do? Who's collecting taxes? The state, not the individual Moors. The days of us acting like individual Moors are over, that's an old paradigm. We must understand, we must be competent Moors. And what does competent Moors mean? You have returned to Morocco, pledged your consent. And if you're lucky enough to be elected as an officer through a ballot. And become elected officer or appointed officer of the state. Then now you have the obligation as the Qadi to fulfill the office or department. To collect taxes and revenue on behalf of the state and the state is sovereign. What are people paying? Who are they paying, I should say? The people are paying the sovereign taxes. Who is the sovereign? It is your state, the state is sovereign. And all of the Moors nationals, citizens of the United States. Their subjects and proteges will pay taxes to who? The sovereign, and the sovereign is the state. Everybody's obligated to pay taxes, you'll learn more about that. So who collects the taxes? The state, and more specifically, the department, i.e. the organ of your Moors state collects the taxes. And what department is that? The Department of the Qadi. Collects your taxes and revenue, that must be understood, let's continue. Let's go down to what's called revenue side of the S X checker. Revenue side of the X checker. Alright, so we're gonna look up the word X checker here in just a moment. X checker is basically the court, right? The tax court, okay, X checker, alright? X checker, remember checker, right? Checker, hold up, I'll show you something real quick, checker. Checker, checkerboard, chessboard has the checker, black and white checkers. X checker, the checker, checkerboard, chessboard. Cause the chessboard is about the treasury chest. The chest is the treasury, bury treasures in a chest. So the chessboard is about the treasury. That must be understood, alright? Okay, mother, revenue side of the X checker.
That jurisdiction of the Court of X Checker. Or of the X Checker Division of the High Court of Justice. By which it ascertains and enforces the proprietary rights of the crown against the subjects of the realm. The practice in revenue cases is not affected by the orders and rules under the Judicature Act of eighteen seventy-five.
Okay, so what is this about? You have to replace the word king with the word state, the state's collecting the taxes, right? So revenue side of the X checker, that jurisdiction of the Court of X Checker. Or of the X Checker Divisions of the High Court of Justice. By which it ascertains and enforces the proprietary rights of the crown, i.e. the state. Against the subjects of the realm. The practice in revenue cases is not affected by the orders and rules under the Judicature Act of eighteen seventy-five. Let's continue. So what is the X checker?
The tax court.
Tax court. It's about the Court of X Checker, right? Okay, mother, Court of X Checker.
In English law, a very ancient court of record. Set up by William the Conqueror as a part of the Aula Regis. And afterwards, one of the four superior courts at Westminster. It was however, inferior in rank to both the king's bench and the common pleas. It was presided over by a chief baron and four whisney barons. It was originally the king's treasury and was charged with keeping the king's accounts and collecting the royal revenues. But pleas between the subject and subject were anciently heard there. Until this was forbidden by the Articula Superchartus twelve ninety. After which its jurisdiction as a court only extended to. Only extended to revenue cases arising out of the non-payment or withholding of debts to the crown, to the crown. But the privilege of suing and being sued in this court was extended to the king's accountants. And later by the use of a convenient fiction to the effect that the plaintiff was the king's debtor or accountant. The court was thrown open to all suitors in personal actions. The X Checker had formerly bought both an equity side and a common law side. But its equity jurisdiction was taken away by the statute five. Case law and transferred, transferred to the Court of Chancery. The Judicature Act of eighteen seventy-three transferred the business and jurisdiction of this court. To the X Checker Division of the High Court of Justice.
Alright, okay, so let's go back, what, what did we just read? Now you're understanding how the Qadi works. Just to give you a quick brief. So your high court, which is your consul court. The state extended now a judicial power even to the Qadi to act like a magistrate. But the magistrate isn't necessarily the judge. But the Qadi has the judicial power to issue warrants, invoices, sanctions. Against those who owe taxes and revenue to the Moors state government. So therefore, right here is talking about this X Checker Court, right? Okay, listen. In English law, a very ancient court of record. Set up by William the Conqueror as a part of the Aula Regis. And afterwards, one of the four superior courts at Westminster. It was however, inferior in rank to both the king's bench and the common pleas. So it's, it's what? So right here it says inferior, inferior in rank to both the king's bench. So it's inferior to what? The consul court, right? It's inferior to the consul court, the state and the consul court. But yet the Qadi still has judicial, judicial powers, listen. Let's start right here, it was however, it was however inferior in rank to both the king's bench and the common pleas. It was presided over by a chief baron and four. How'd you knock them up?
Whisney.
Whisney barons. It was originally the king's treasury. And was charged with keeping the king's accounts and collecting the royal revenues. The Qadi is responsible for collecting the royal revenues. But pleas between subject and subject were anciently heard there. Until this was forbidden by the Articula Superchartus twelve ninety. After which its jurisdiction as a court only extended to revenue cases. Rising out of non-payment or withholding of debts to the state. But the privilege of suing and being sued in this court was extended to the king's accountant, Qadi. And later by the use of the convenient fiction to the effect that the plaintiff was the king's debtor or accountant. So who's the plaintiff? The state, who's the plaintiff? The Qadi, the Qadi is now the complaintant, the plaintiff saying, hey. You defended, owe us taxes and revenue. So the state extended the Qadi judicial powers to go and submit invoices, warrants, and sanctions, right? And when it's not paid, now the Qadi can come to the consul court, the high court and say. I got a problem here, meet you to issue now a ruling on this. That's how it works, so the Qadi and the Qazi work hand in hand, serendipitous to work hand in hand. To collect on taxes and revenue, that must be understood, alright? Okay, definition of tax. Okay, definition of tax. Mother?
Verb, to impose a tax, to enact or declare that a pecuniary contribution. Shall be made by the persons liable for the support of government. Spoken of an individual to be taxed is to be included as an assessment made for purposes of taxation. Practice, a pecuniary burden laid upon individuals or property to support the government. And is a payment exacted by legislative authority. An annual compensation paid to the government for annual protection and for current support of government. A ratable portion of the produce of the property and labor of the individual citizens. Taken by the nation in the exa- exercise, exercise of its sovereign rights. For the support of government for the administration of the laws and as the means for continuing in operation. The various legitimate functions of the state.
Alright, so that's a little bit of background about tax. That's a little bit of background about revenue, right? And whose obligation is it to collect taxes and revenue? The Kadi and the state, right? So the Kadi works on behalf of the state. So the office or the department of the Kadi has been given the competent authority. To be able to issue invoices, warrants, sanctions to collect on taxes, okay? Let's go back over to the Act of Al-Dusers nineteen oh six. We'll go, go down now to Article sixty. Okay. Article sixty, in accordance with the right granted by Article eleven of the Madrid Convention. Foreigners shall have the right to acquire property without the shoot, throughout the Sharifian Empire. And his majesty's Sultan shall issue to his administrative and judicial officers, who's the administrative officer? The Kadi, who's the judicial officer? Consul court, okay? So who are we talking about, let's pause right there. Kazi, Kadi, see? Okay, go back to your treaty. Let's start from the top, Article sixty, in accordance with the right granted by Article eleven of the Madrid Convention. Foreigners shall have the right to acquire property throughout the Sharifian Empire. And his majesty, so who's his majesty now? The state, right? So his majesty's Sultan shall issue to his administrative and judicial officers such instructions. It may be necessary for them not to refuse the registration of deeds without lawful cause. What does that mean? We should not try to hinder the citizens of United States of America from acquiring property. Just as long as they're paying their taxes, they have a right to acquire property, to erect buildings, houses, et cetera, right? Cause a building is also a house, anything that's, that's erected is what they consider a building, right? Cause you built it, it's a building, you built it, you built the house, right? So our job, the Kadi's job is to make sure that as long as the United States and United States of America. And their charter colonies are abiding by Moroccan law, then we cannot hold up the transfer of their deeds, right? That's if they have deeds, we're talking about that another day. Alright, subsequent transfers. Either by deeds between living parties or by theft shall continue without hindrance. Alright, let's move on down. Whenever foreigners may have acquired property, they will be permitted to erect buildings in compliance with regulation and usage. What regulation and usage? The legislation of the state that's being enforced by the Kadi. Continue, before authorizing the execution of deeds for transferring property. The Kadi will have to satisfy himself of the validity of the title. Conforming to the Mo- the Mohammedan law, which is Moroccan law. The Moths shall be designated each, in each city and district. Specify in an article, the Kadi who shall have charge of such verification. It's the obligation of the state, and extended judicial powers as a magistrate to the Kadi. Kadi must put their seal on all the deeds to make sure that those deeds, what does it mean about the deeds? That people are paying their taxes, that's the deeds is all about, cause the deed is what? A grant, a grant is what? A permit, a deed is what? A license, a deed is what? A firmament, a firmament to hold on to a property in Morocco. And if they don't have the proper written instrument known as the deed, then that means what? They don't have the competent authority to hold on to any property. Who is supposed to have the deeds? The United States of America was supposed to have the deeds, that's the contracting state. So the Kadi is supposed to go straight to United States of America, uh, where's the deeds? Oh, you say your bankers got it, okay, bankers, where's the deeds? The banker's gonna say what? The state got it, okay, state, where's the deeds? You see the game they're going to play? It will not work because they don't have deeds. Why don't they have deeds? Because only organic states can have deeds, the state issues the deed. The bank just issues the loan, who holds on to the deed ultimately? The state, and who according to the Act of Al-Dusers of nineteen oh six is the contracting state? The United States of America, not the United States. And it's certainly not their charter calling known as the State of Colorado as an example. Cause the State of Colorado is a municipal corporation. And corporations can't hold deeds, only organic states can hold deeds. See the predicament they put themselves in? Let's continue, Article sixty-one, with a view to creating new resources for the Moths. The Congress recognizes in the principle that a tax may be established on city buildings. That's easy to understand. A part of the receipts thus realized shall be set aside for the requirements of municipal streets and hygiene. And generally for the expense of improvement and con- conservation of the cities. The taxes due from the Moorsh, from the Moorsh or foreign owner. Without distinction, but the tenant or the holder of the key. Shall be responsible to the Moors Treasury, Moors gotta take the time to really understand what we just read here. I'll read it again. A part of receipts thus realized shall be set aside for requirements of municipal streets and hygiene. And generally for the expense of improvement and conservation of the cities, what, what's that first paragraph talking about? Do you recognize the United States international organization in their Congress? Is always talking about this infrastructure bill that they never pass. Why is it the United States Congress never passes the infrastructure bill? Because they know it was ultimately the Moors' responsibility to take care of the welfare, of the hygiene of infrastructure. Of Morocco. They don't wanna pass a bill to upgrade Morocco. Cause they know the Moors are coming for the trust. The competent Moors are coming for the trust, so the United States and their Congress. Keep talking about this infrastructure bill that they never passed. Because ultimately, according to the treaty provision, it was the Moors' responsibility to take care of Morocco. What's this next paragraph? Listen. The taxes due from the Moorsh or foreign owner without distinction. But the tenant or the holder of the key shall be responsible to the Moors Treasury, what's happening here? Moors are obligated to pay taxes. Who else is obligated to pay taxes? Foreigners with no distinction. Moors all this time kept telling each other, we're not supposed to pay taxes, that's not true. Your treaty says you're obligated to pay taxes, who's supposed to pay taxes? Moors and foreigners. Who pays taxes? The tax is due from the Moorsh or foreign owner without distinction. It's right there in your treaty. But the tenant or the holder of the key shall be responsible to the Moors Treasury. So whoever's collecting the taxes from the Moors and the foreigners who are the tenants. So the foreigners are the tenants. The holder of the key, who's the holder of the key? That's your comp troller, your comp troller, which is the accountants. That's the Federal Reserve, that's the IMF, that's all these so-called treasurers. Of the charter colonies that have been collecting the taxes and overseeing the accounts, the ledgers. They're ultimately responsible as the holder of the key, the key of what? The treasury chest. They're holder of the key of the treasury chest. It's all about the treasury chest, that's why it's about the chessboard. Because the chessboard, Moors, is about what? It's about the kingdom. The name of the game is to capture the opponent's king, right? What does the king represent in capturing the opponent's king? You're capturing the kingdom, you're capturing their land. And when you capture your opponent's land, you capture their laws and you capture their wealth. That's the name of this game, to capture the other person's land. What are Moors doing right now? We're trying to restore our land, we're restoring constitutions, we're trying to reign in the order. You gotta understand what this game is about, the chest is the land. The chessboards, the chest is the treasury, what's the treasure? Land and its people, it's what you call the movable and immovable assets. What are movable? The people, what's immovable? All the buildings, the infrastructure, the corporations, et cetera. So this game is all about what? These squares represent what? It represents the forward movement to get access to someone else's chest. Someone else's treasury chest. And C D Mohammed allowed the United States of America to stay here as the Moors' chest. As a treasury chest. And so right now, someone's holding on, the holder of the key. Right now is the Federal Reserve Bank, the IMF Bank. And all the rest of their banks such as Wells Fargo, Chase, et cetera. Are holding on as comp trollers to our land, our trust. This is why in the United Nations Charter nineteen forty-five. It talks about the trustees overseeing what? The trust territories. Because the trust territories, the trust is the treasury, is the treasury chest. Let's take it from here, the tax is due from the Moorsh or foreign owner without distinction. But the tenant or the holder of the key shall be responsible to the Moors Treasury. So at the end of the day, the Moors Treasury should have been collecting the taxes. But we acquiesced and did not enforce the treaty provisions. So the United States and the Federal Reserve and the IMF have been now living off of our trust. But now that Moors are restoring their constitutions and coming back into competency, now we can force. International law, which is our treaties, and start to collect the taxes, the taxes. From who? Moors and foreigners without any distinction. And who collects the taxes? The state, and the state has a treasury. Because the state is overseeing what? The kingdom, the kingdom. The word kingdom is two words, dumb, dominion, the king's dominion. And his treasury is his land, without land, you ain't a king, without land, you're not a queen. And you must control the laws of that land in order to now be able to collect the wealth. Cause she who controls the land controls his laws and his wealth, that's the way it works. So now that we're restoring our competency of our states. The foreign bankers of the United States is not going to like it. Because they know they're obligated to these treaties, they've always known this. Because the Moors have the ultimate jurisdiction, that everything is supposed to go to the Moors Treasury. And no matter who the holder is of the key of the taxes of that chest. Ultimately, it's gotta go to the Moors Treasury, that must be understood.
Which is the Moors state.
Which is the Moors state, that's correct. Continue. Regulations issued jointly by the Sharifian government and a diplomatic body of Tangier shall establish the rate. Its method of collection and application. And shall determine the quota of revenue thus created, which shall be devoted to the expense of improvements. And conservation of the cities. See, the Moors' obligation is to take care of the cities. The infrastructure of the cities was our responsibility. That's why the United States Congress, which is a de facto government, doesn't wanna pass a bill for infrastructure. Cause they know the competent Moors is gonna have to live by their own treaty provisions and fix their own cities. Cause these cities don't belong to the United States, they belong to the Moors. It was our obligation to govern the affairs of the citizens, subjects and proteges. And to take care of our own cities and the conservation thereof. That's what your treaty says, let's continue. At Tangier, this court shall be turned over to the International Sanitary Council. Which shall decide as to its use until the creation of a municipal organization. What's the municipal organization all about? The Moors have to create public works, right? Public works, public services to take care of our cities. We have to govern affairs to take care of our cities. It's our job to take care of sanitary things, hygiene of our cities, the infrastructure of the streets. To take care of the transportation, take care of health insurance, that's our job. To take care of the welfare of the people and to take care of the infrastructure, that's our job to govern. That's why we collect taxes, we don't collect taxes just so that the people at the top can live a lifestyle of royalty. We collect taxes so we can take care of the welfare of the people and take care of the infrastructure of Morocco. That must be understood. Let's go on past these last two articles, Article sixty-two. His Sharifian majesty had decided nineteen oh one that the Moors officials who collect the agricultural taxes. Should no longer receive either the socra or the mana. The conference is of the opinion that the rule should be made general so far as is possible. Now I don't know, um, what these words mean, uh, as it relates to the socra. And the mana, somebody have to look that up, cause that's Arabic, I tried to look it up, I don't know what it is, so. Someone inform NPAC study session about what these words mean, alright? Let's move on to Article sixty-three. Article sixty-three, the Sharifian delegates have stated that the Habu property or certain state property. Notly, not notably, buildings of the Mothsin occupied at a rental of six percent. Are held by persons subject to foreign jurisdiction without regular title. Or by virtue of contracts subject to revision. The conference desirous of reminiscing the state affairs charges. The diplomatic body of Tangier to solve these two questions equitably in accord with the special commission. Whom his Sharifian majesty may be pleased to designate to that effect. So, so what are they talking about as we start to wrap up? Article sixty-three, the Sharifian delegates have stated that Habu property. What's Habu property? That's all the Moors buildings that you see all around planet Earth, those limestone buildings, megalithic stone buildings. That, that the colleges now call their state capital buildings. That the college now call their Supreme Court buildings. That the colonies now call their supreme court buildings. That the colonies now call their museums. The colonies call their post offices. The colonies, colonies call it their churches, et cetera. All these buildings that's made out of quartz and limestone and granite, been here for decades, a millennium. You must understand, these are the Habu properties. And the United States of America nor the United States international organization can hold a deed as it relates to these properties. They can only lease them with a contract and that contract provisions can be changed. They're not allowed to hold on to our Habu properties with a deed. That must be understood. Things such as parks, they talk about these parks all the time. You go back and do the history on these parks, you find out it was always dedicated to have something to do with indigenous people, a lot of these parks. They understand exactly what they're doing. This is why sometimes these parks, they won't let nobody build nothing on those parks because they know it's a part of the Habu properties, they, they, they know this. Alright, so as we start digging into this, the Qadi will start understanding more about the Habu properties, alright? That must be understood, okay? So take it from the top, Article sixty-three. The Sharifian delegates have stated that Habu property or certain state property, notably, buildings of the Mothsen occupied at a rental of six percent are held by persons subject to foreign jurisdiction without regular title. Mean they don't have a deed, they don't have regular title, they don't have a deed. Or by virtue of contracts subject to revision. They got a lease agreement, okay? The conference desirous of remittening thi- this state affairs charges the diplomatic body of Tangier to solve these two questions equitably in accord with a special commissioner whom His Sharifian majesty may be pleased to designate to that effect. So Moors have to get into what you call friendly applications that set up the arrangements to deal with the colonies as it relates to our Habu properties and relates to any lands in Morocco. It's the obligation of the Qadi, right? It's the obligation of Qadi as we start to close out, it's the obligation of the Qadi. Right? Let's go ahead and find it, just a moment. The obligation of Qadi the Qadi to oversee taxes and revenue. That's what we're learning thus far in the first five articles of chapter four. But we have to take the time to get an understanding, who are we actually taxing? Who's obligated to pay taxes? And who's obligated to go in now to what? Collect those taxes. And who ultimately has the jurisdiction? The state. That must be understood, alright? So as we, as we start to close out, what is this all about? Okay, what are we going over right now? The Act of Altusiris nineteen oh six, chapter four, Articles fifty-nine through seventy-six is about the return of taxes and new revenue. But ultimately, what is this about? About maintaining the triple principle. That is the obligation of the Moors. And what's your obligation is to maintain what? Sovereignty and independence, integrity of domains and economic liberty without any inequality. And the only way to enforce that, we have to understand that we have to return to Morocco through our competent Moors' state governments. Because we cannot enforce chapters one, two, three or four if we don't have a competent constitution, it's called a paramount constitution, right? That's what we have to understand, Moors. If we want to collect taxes, we got every right to do it. Every right to do it. But we must be the competent authority, i.e. we need the Qadi to enforce the legislation of the Moors' state. I am with that, Islam.